I'd like to thank you everybody for coming to this Wairika City Council meeting, the June 7th. All rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, please silence your cell phones. And we had closed session and there was no reportable action, so everybody knows. To the public comments, this public comments, citizens may participate and is welcome and invited to the city council meetings. Time is reserved at each meeting, regular meeting for those audience, in the audience to wish to address the city council. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanders and profound, profane and disruptive remarks. Public comments is not intended to be a question and answer period, or conversations due with the city council staff. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken at this by the city council during the public comment section of this meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item listed, not listed on the, posted on the agenda. If you come up with, to, to do this, please speak from the podium and state your name, if you wish to do so.
My name is Don Marie Autry, and I live on Fourth Street here in Wairika. And I'm, I'm here tonight, well, I'm here every night, I'm, I'm here every time, but, and, and it was my understanding that to do Gold Rush Days, the insurance was completely taken care of for all the vendors to participate. There's been many vendors who can't do the insurance. And, you know, we have done it since 2008, we've done Gold Rush Days, never, ever have we ever had to supply our own insurance. And we've done all the other events also, same thing, it's a blanket insurance, you're covered. And now this time, we're told numerous different things, so we're trying to get this figured out. And, and it just seems like it's kind of fraudulent. They come here, they say they have it covered, and then now they're requesting all of us to take care of it, and we're not getting any information. It's, I, we need help.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm sorry, I'm just gonna chime in, because Don Marie did call me about this issue, and I suggested she come to public comment, because there's a large overlap with city council members that used to be on the chambers that took on this event. And so if there was any suggestions for me on who to follow up on whether or not, how this was done in the past, and if anybody had any information to share, that would be helpful.
We probably know both of us, but, back when the Chamber of Commerce, the Wairika Chamber of Commerce was putting the event on, we had event coverage for the whole event, and it was through Churchill Insurance, and we paid a hefty price for them. However, the Chamber of Commerce is not putting on this event, this is an event put on by the Downtown Merchants Association. So, I have no idea what they're doing.
It's actually, it's actually Downtown Merchants Association with the Friends of the Museum. The Friends of the Museum originally pulled the insurance, I went to the first three meetings and I haven't been back, because I've been working, but I would suggest getting ahold of Grace Bennett and/or Corey Hayden, Corey Hayden is the chairperson for this event.
So I, I'm gonna make a suggestion, then, could you try to contact Mr. Ledbetter?
Can we get people to speak into their mics? Because I don't think people on the mic can hear.
Good idea.
I'm sorry, I mean, yeah, I just, I can't, we're not hearing anyone speaking into their mics. So, yeah, I suggest that you try to give them jingle, and if you want, I could help follow up tomorrow on that.
Yeah, I will do that, I will reach out to Corey and Grace and possibly Miss Baird tomorrow, and engage you in the process of your understanding of the history of how this transpired, with the vendors requiring to have insurance for the first time this year.
Well, the big controversy, Don Marie's right, is there, there's a little, on their part, there's a little deception on what, what was expected, you know? They, they were, as vendors, they were thinking that they weren't gonna have to pay to get into this insurance, and now that there's gonna have to be this, it kind of changes the ballgame on the whole thing. And I guess it is for me too, it's a little confusing, because I thought the Friends of the Museum had this covered on insurance wise too, so I guess there is a little confusion on that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't recall when Grace Bennett came before us and talked to us about accepting it. It was my understanding that they were only a pass-through as a nonprofit, but they never, ever mentioned doing the insurance. Not to my, not to my recollection anyway, so that's something that the vendor, the vendors need to work out with, I think the merchants or whoever's putting it on. I don't think that the museum ever agreed to do the insurance, I never heard that.
Yes, they did.
They, they have, we have the insurance paperwork, because they're putting the event on, we require a million dollar policy for the event. So they do have that covered. I'll follow back up with, I'll see if I can get ahold of Corey tomorrow, and I know we have a member of the EDC here tonight, maybe he can facilitate that conversation. I did talk to Grace Bennett today, and they are requiring the vendors to seek additional insurance at this moment, so.
And that's up to them, because they're doing the event.
That is true, yes, we're, the city is not putting the event on, yeah.
It's not a city event anymore.
Wasn't it because, also, I don't think it was fault of, I think that was the insurance, is what I heard of the, challenge, is that the insurance were getting stripped and they kicked it back. So they have insurance for the event, but they said, no, this policy does not, does not cover the vendors.
And that's probably true.
And it's not their fault, the insurance, they're getting very tight, and so they want every private vendor to have their own insurance, in case something happens to their employees or what have you, so they're really tightening up on.
They were starting to tighten up years ago.
I think it was the insurance company came back and said, oh no, we cover the event, but every vendor there is a business, they have to have their own insurance. They're running as a business, they have to have their own insurance, that's what I understand.
That's a great point, Mr. Middleton, I will follow up with the insurance provider we have on file for this event first and foremost, and Don Marie, I will call you tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because there's many people that are trying to do the event, that don't have the money and don't have the insurance, and had absolutely no idea. And, and, you know, I've never been required to show proof of, so I was like, well, let me find out. So, yeah, so please let me know, Stan, thank you.
I was gonna add, if we are this confused about it, perhaps they need to do a more thorough job of getting things, information out, so that the vendors know.
It would seem like this, there'd be a reason for you to be concerned about, because this is the classic example, it's something that the council doesn't have jurisdiction over, and really shouldn't be in public comment at all. Yeah, so, I mean, because it's not your baby.
It's not our responsibility, it's not our event, you're right.
Right, not our event now, but.
Okay, any more public comments?
Yes.
Please.
Hi, my name's John Bowman, and I live in Big Springs. I'm really just here tonight, because I wanted to register my support for legal access to cannabis products in Wairika. I know Elizabeth Tabor is gonna give a presentation about that a little while, and I wanted to just kind of be here and support that concept. I've been a Siskiyou County resident for more than 20 years, and I love this community. And one of the things I think that would really, you know, improve it for, for folks who do enjoy legal cannabis products, is to have closer, more convenient, safe access to those things. I've also known Elizabeth for more than 10 years, we've worked on several projects together over the years, and I've always been impressed with her professionalism and her community ethic, she's, she's really been involved in this process with the community for as long as it's been a thing in, in Weed and Mount Shasta. And I really think that, I mean, she's, if, if anyone's done a great job of showing that these kind of businesses can operate in our local town safely and legally and be in benefit to the community, I think she's done that very well with her shops in Weed and Mount Shasta. So, you know, currently, people in the north, north end of Shasta Valley, like myself, and anybody in Wairika, Scott Valley area, they're all having to drive as far as Weed or Mount Shasta to have access to these now legal products. And I just think it makes, it makes a lot of sense to have those dollars coming to Wairika, and, and the convenience of it in people's lives, for those people who are using it still for medical purposes, which there are still a lot of those folks who are using it for more medicine type uses. It's really, you know, it's a, it's a bit of a hardship, say, if you're living in, say, Fort Jones, and you have to drive all the way to Weed or something like that, it just doesn't make sense, you know, as far as I can see, like I said, there's been a great track record of success with it so far in South County. So I just, I think that's, it's, it's time to, to start thinking about those things, and, and a few extra good paying jobs in the city couldn't hurt either, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, this brings us to a good comment on that.
Elizabeth Tabor, Mod Airport Road, some familiar faces and some new. I've come to the council probably quite a few times over the last few years, and obviously, things have changed in this whole world in pandemic days. I come to your city daily, even at $7 a gallon, to accommodate a lot of your patients. I don't like seeing the adult use industry, because a lot of people that I do come here are patients, they're medical patients, believe it or not. And then I drive back to the city I come from, and I give them your tax money. Also, during the pandemic, I'd like to mention, I know Juliana is part of your team now, but when a lot of businesses were being closed down, doors were shut, people were frantic, the cannabis industry was declared essential. Therefore, I was open every day during this pandemic, and was able to contribute that tax money that other businesses were not, to our two cities that desperately needed it at that time. And it's time that Wairika realizes that compliant wise, the way we are state regulated, it is an asset now, more so to your community than it would be anything harmful. The references I have from, from both cities of the police department, fire department, the mayors, I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce in Weed now, so I'm very involved with our community, very involved with education, contribute anytime something comes up or events come up, oh, talk to Elizabeth, from kids' sports to things you might need for the city, we are constantly contributing and trying to give back. I apologize on this little phrase, because I can't recall the name of the nonprofit here in Wairika, they just received $300,000 in your city to, I think it's your Head Start program, through the Department of Cannabis Control, they were allowing a grant, and it was granted here due to Siskiyou County allowing me to have a commercial cannabis business in this county, and it has now funded them for the next three years. Due to the fact that Siskiyou County allowed me to operate, you get a portion of that tax money for this particular grant. So there's many different, outside of being here and accommodating customers, travelers, patients, numerous patients, you do have numerous patients that still have cards within your community, I think maybe it's time to open that thought process again, to look at, maybe look into that, Juliana is well, well versed, I worked really closely with her, and I appreciate her immensely. And now, I would like to see if I can work with the city, because I would really like to operate here in the city of Wairika.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've got a couple of questions. Yeah, what percentage of your patients here in Wairika, not in the north county, but just in Wairika, are recreational as opposed to medical, have a prescription?
60%.
60% have a, okay, okay.
Have a medical recommendation, and a few of them have the actual California State Medical Card, which does exempt them from a local sales tax, so I have to keep that on record, because it is reported to the state.
And I don't want to get into too much back and forth, but I think it's an opportunity to, because I have been in this position for about five months and heard interest that this topic was tabled in the past, and possibly interest on a reevaluation, where we could bring that data forward to you, Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, I, I don't think it was tabled, I think it was decided that, at that time, that we didn't want it, there was no interest in it at that time.
Would the board consider maybe having an ad hoc committee?
So what it was, is, we actually, when we made the decision back in the day, was we, we promised to bring it back in conjunction to getting some stats on what it affected, and this is for previous councilman Rob Pacheco, it was a request of Rob Pacheco, we brought it back, and so we, for as long as it's okay with the rest of council, I would, I would like to request that we bring this back in a timely matter, and so we can just have further discussion on this, because there is a lot of things for both ways that we need to discuss on this, on this incident, and, and, you know, further take it along. So I know, in, like you said, in Weed and Mount Shasta, there has been significant financial things that have contributed to that, so we need to discuss both sides of the, of this issue though. And, and last time we did it, we had a big forum, we actually were at the community center, our community theater, we discussed, that was us three, it was in this.
Wasn't that on the county though, Dwayne, wasn't that?
At the minors.
The big, yeah, at the big, that was more so for the county, I believe, because I.
We, we had, we had one here or two, because we were packed.
Yeah, convention center, we had one here, one at the minors and convention center, and one, the biggest one was at the, the community theater.
So I think that's when we were, we did the county ad hoc committee, because of all the disruption that was going on at that time in the county, we didn't, and I say we, because I was involved in that same side with the grants, didn't want that to roll into the city at that time. So how many years have passed now? There we go.
Well, it, it's been two and a half since we did it here, when, when we did it here, yeah. I, I would.
It hasn't been since I've taken my seat, that it hasn't.
Yeah, you hadn't.
It was back when Robert Chago.
Yeah.
Like I said, we promised to bring it back, and so, Mr. Ledbetter will bring that back, and, and we'll have further discussions.
I have a caveat on that, I don't, just want to bring it back to talk about it, I'd like, I want, I want figures before we meet. I want to see revenue figures, I want to see, you know, what, yeah, what the police are doing. I mean, I know when Colorado did it, they, first year, they said they're gonna do 40, something like 40 mil, or 80 million or something in taxes, and they only did 40 million, and they're still having issues with it, although their revenue's gone up. So I, I want to make sure that, that, that we have everything, so we're not just sitting here for an hour, hour and a half, talking.
Like I said, law enforcement and everything else involved, and that was a big thing with, with Rob Pacheco, was the way the school and the kids were affected in those communities in Weed and Mount Shasta, and what type of, the only thing we're gonna have a hard time on that one, is we just got through going through a pandemic, so on the school issue, it's kind of hard to find out if there's any more.
I can testify to the fact, in both cities, they're gonna give you utmost, that there has not been any incidences in regard to our dispensaries, period.
So that's, that's good to know.
My son is also a sergeant, and so is my daughter-in-law, so I've been very reputable.
Just in the interest of structure and time, I say, I got the direction, we have the luxury of Juliana from Mount Shasta, and Emily from Weed, and so we will compile the data, and we will come back with the data, and then at that point, you can direct us to get more data or give us information. And based off of, I will, I will be in touch with the director of planning, Juliana, and we'll see where this fits into the gaps of the general plan that's been stretched out, and when we can bring it back, so.
Awesome. May I ask one question? So, so your interest, because other people have expressed interest in.
The industry.
Opening an insurance, obviously you have experience, you've.
Since 2010.
Okay, test model, wow, so test model for Weed and Mount Shasta, so you're in our county.
Yes, sir.
And, so you're expressing, if it was to move forward and be up for a vote or discussion, you know, our discussion, wherever direction we go, you're expressing an interest that you want to be in Wairika, and be a third shot in Siskiyou County.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And what a nice thing about this is, is all the three of us went on different tours back in the day, Shasta, or Shasta Lake. And Mount Shasta, obviously, but Shasta Lake, which they recommended highly down there, that you did, that's where you received a lot of your education, I was told, I guess, was down there, in Shasta Lake, correct?
Well, I'm very familiar with the owners in Shasta Lake, I dealt with a little bit, and helped a lot of questions with their, their council and their city manager. I've also taken medical courses with a lot of physicians, oncologists, neurologists out of San Francisco University, so, as well as all my employees are required to take those classes, and their plaques are hanging on the wall. So we do operate quite differently than most, I don't like being a pot shop, no, I'm seriously. And so even travelers that we get from other states, and we've had many A-Listers stop in Weed, they're like, this is like nothing I've ever witnessed or seen, I don't think you've been to the store in Weed. And to answer your question too, Corey.
I haven't often, so Jason has a Mr. number, I'd like to call you.
Oh, absolutely, and, and I'm always here for, for, you know, like, regulation questions, financial questions. Finance, we're still on the cash-based industry, but I mean, there's things that, that you will think of after tonight, and I'm always willing to be open door to answer questions. I just think that the fact that we come up here so often, and with gas and everything else, I just really can see that your city will benefit in a very positive way from this.
And I will go ahead and organize a tour, and I will certainly note, I have your contact info, so I'll notify you when we do bring this back to a meeting, I hate to be the negative city manager, but I'm just trying to keep this thing moving along, so, thank you.
I know, I have an executive board meeting tomorrow night that I have to run, so I feel you.
Thank you very much.
It's nice to see you again, though.
Thank you.
Jason, I have all my notes, I have a big old binder of this whole thing that I kept from, because of this, so.
Okay.
I can hand you that whole binder over, add all the questions we went through.
I will, I will take that from you, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Evening, council members, Jason, Mr. Attorney, my on, Jerry Stocker, Wairika City resident, business owner in town. Bear with me, this is gonna be a long conversation.
I know, I know.
In regards to what Don Marie was talking about, I, I don't know this for sure, but I think there's group policies that you can inquire about that only cost a small amount of money versus going and getting your very own individual policy. I wasn't gonna mention this tonight, but something else that this lady mentioned kind of made me think about actually bringing it up. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, and I don't want to sound like I'm not trying to help, but I got a problem that I've been dealing with at my store, and my question is, in the future, going forward, there's gotta be a better solution. I won't use the gentleman's name, I guess, but, a few days ago, he had the police called on him twice. I was one time neighbor across the street at the smoke shop, was the second time. The neighbor across the street, I'm not sure if he's, maybe he's level-headed as some people at some times, but he was pretty close to getting into a physical altercation with him. This gentleman has stood outside of my store, even though I've tried to help him, when he kind of, there's, he's not taking his medication, that's all there is to it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pull back on what he said. We've tried to help this gentleman, we've given him free clothing, we've done all kinds of things, but he lost it the other day. So he stands outside in front of my store yelling at people that we don't pay sales tax, that we acquire our inventory illegally, and when I wasn't there, I had left for the day, other than quite a few fingers to me, and F use, he told Patty, my fiancee, to F off, and that we just rip people off. None of this stuff is true, and I don't care about that, but I can't have somebody outside my store doing that kind of stuff all day long. My next-door neighbor can't have somebody outside the store that he's gonna get in a fight with. My landlord told me after that altercation that we had with him, that he took a swing at him the morning before. So when I called YPD, you know, and I, the supporter of the police in every aspect and way, the answer I kind of got at first was, well, it doesn't sound like he's breaking the law. I'll make this as short as possible, if you're drinking and being obnoxious in public, you can get arrested for drunk in public. This gentleman caused chaos in the neighborhood for more than 24 hours. The next morning, when I went back to the store, he had gone over to another neighbor, which was right next to me, and tore up all their flower beds, that's vandalism. So, my point is, there has to be another answer than waiting for somebody to be suicidal or hurt somebody else, and be condemned or considered 51/50. And I know that's not a short-term solution, but that's a big concern. In regards to the, what this lady was talking about, you can drive within 30 minutes of Wairika, and buy anything you want legally. Weed and, I assume, Mount Shasta collects tax, tax dollars on that revenue. Oregon, although they don't have sales tax, I think Wairika's in a, almost in a, in a negative position because of our location to Southern Oregon. So, part of my long-term goal would be to keep people from wanting to drive that far north. And if you can go 30 minutes south, or 35, 40 minutes north, and off the books to just about every street corner in this town, then you guys should seriously consider what the benefits would be too. I don't know where you can delegate this revenue, but to possibly help in the homeless and mentally ill situation.
Thank you, Jerry. We have a discussion about the chief gentleman, set up a meeting on these companies, individuals, there's actually a few individuals that we've been, I've been getting numerous reports on lately, and I think we need to just have further discussion on that.
Is that something you want in, internally, staff discussion, okay? Yep, absolutely.
And I think it's something that conversation-wise that we need to figure out with, maybe Dr. Sarah Kilar again, to have that conversation with her again.
Okay.
And I can go into detail a little bit later with you on how that needs to look.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
On the flip side of things, it doesn't mean that we don't want to help this guy, still. So, in his rage, he just recently got evicted from where he was staying. He basically said, all I need is food, clothing, and a place to stay. And I've known this guy for six months now, and I think that's something that needs to be a part of the focus, is those items. I know we're doing everything we can, but that one particular guy is driving the neighborhood crazy, and is begging for food, shelter.
Thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Mayor, I can't walk back over there, I should come and back. The reason I thought that, you know, my comment should not be stricken from the record, is that they came here to city council to ask if they could do, if they could do the event, Gold Rush Days. That makes it city council's business not to be stricken from the record, you know? And, and I still say, they came here saying they had insurance blanketed, it was all taken care of, and now all of a sudden, it's not. There's a problem with that, they need to either come back to council and explain why it's not, or cancel the event, because it's not fair to vendors who want to do this event, and who are not able to, so, thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna get to the root of it.
Yeah, but striking my comment is not okay.
I don't know, when did, when was that mentioned?
Yeah.
No. Did you record comments also?
Yeah, Don Marie, we have your comments, and I will definitely be in touch with you tomorrow, I'm gonna, I'll dig into this, so, thank you.
No, the only, the only thing that was said was that there's good reason for you not to be aware of it, because it's not something in your jurisdiction at this time.
Oh, I see, oh, what you were saying, oh, 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 gotcha, no, we're not, right, any other public comments this time? All righty, any other public comments this time? All mine? There we go. Is that better?
Public comments about this lady back there. If you guys do your, a little bit of research and look up what the, um, statistical problems are. Uh, suicide, uh, accidents caused by death, uh, all the above. From marijuana compared to alcohol, you'll ask yourself why alcohol is legal.
Right. Thank you. Good point. All right, we will move on to number eight consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial. Only be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A approval ratification of payments issued from May 9th, 2022 through May 9th, 20, May 29th, 2022. B approval of minutes of the special meeting held on May 17th, 2022. C adopt resolution amend this 2022 city council meeting calendar cancelling the meetings of July 5th, 2022 and September 6th, 2022. And D approval of the cash and fiscal reports, cash balances report, April 2022. Budget and revenue expenditures with year-to-date actuals through April 30th, 2022. Fiscal performance reports of April 30th, 2022. E adopt resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika setting forth appropriations limits, limit for the city of Wairika fiscal year 2022 through 2023. F acceptance of the city's audited financial statements for 2020 and 2021. G continuation of urgency ordinance number 864 fireworks. H continuation of urgency or resolution number 2021-51 remote public meetings. I wave, I'm going to go horse before I get all through all these. Wave full text readings of all ordinance on the agenda ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Is there any questions of the council? Yes.
Yes, I would like to, uh, take item number one off, uh, just for correction. Item number A, 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 sorry.
For, for discussion, okay?
Uh, just for correction.
Yeah. And I think we can go ahead and vote on the consent at this moment and then circle back to that.
Yeah, correct. Is there any, any other, any other questions on the consent agenda? We're going to bring back, we're going to talk about 8A, but this will be through B, C, D, E, F, G, H and I. Thought I'd like to hear a motion.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar as presented with the exclusion of A.
I'll second that motion.
Second, I will do roll call. I want you, since you're saying that, I want you to read all those too.
I'm really busy right here, really busy.
Okay, Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Uh, Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And Duane Keg, hi. Now we'll go through number 8A.
Okay, uh, number, yes, number 8A and on the second, third page, um, under, um, it, under Cal Cities. It says on their board of directors meeting and that was not for the board of directors meeting. They don't charge us to go to board of directors meetings. They pay for that. This was for legislative action days and the city leadership, they, they put three, um, they took three separate events and put them into one in Sacramento. So, um, that just struck me and I thought, no, we're not paying $475 to go to a board meeting. So, um, Jason, if we could change that, uh, from board of directors meeting to legislative action days and the rest of the, the, I, 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 I thought that I had given them the, the overshoot that had the exact title of it. In fact, I'm pretty sure I did.
If there is a way, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, if you can ask us to make that change and approve A and then we will make that change.
With the adjustments.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve that, um, $475 uh, with the correction of legislative action days.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, second with the correction of the verbiage. Um, I'll go through roll call now. Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Is there a difference in the, the finance, the stream of finance from a board of directors meeting to a legislative action meeting?
No, I don't believe there is.
It's still going to Cal Cities.
So, so it doesn't change the funding stream?
No.
No.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And I, Duane Keg.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. We'll move on to number nine. Number nine.
I'm switching. Somebody's taking over here. I will be in the gallery, but.
And this is agenda title, second reading, possible adoption zoning ordinance amendment. And this one would be due to.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we presented the first reading and had a public hearing duly noticed at the last city, regular city council meeting. Um, and it brought back the second reading of the four ordinance that we discussed for, uh, ratification, assuming that there's no requested significant amendments. So the first item tonight is the updates to the conditional use permit ordinance. So as we state in the summary for all of the staff reports is that these are four key ordinances to doing general planning throughout the city. Um, these are very common actions and so it is not permitting anything new. It's just clarifying the processes for allowing these types of applications to be taken and, uh, legal, basically creating findings that meet new case law. And so, uh, tonight's the second, uh, reading of that and hopefully ratification. So if there's any questions, um, that came up since the first reading, um, we did take time with council member McCoy since he was absent at the last meeting, uh, to go over all four. Um, so that he was comfortable as well before the meeting. Um, so pretty much it's in your court. If you have any additional questions that came up since last meeting.
And I do realize it was a 4-0 vote. So I'll make the motion.
Um, I like, I need to open it up for the public.
Okay.
Again, um, all right, is there, is there, let's, there's any other questions first from the council? Then I'm going to, I am going to open it up to the public. So I'm going to open this up now to the public, the public comment part of this. Do you have any public comments on this agenda title? I know. Close it to public comment or open it back up to the council again.
This is Councilman McCoy. I would, uh, move to adopt by reading its title only, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wairika, amending certain sections of the Wairika municipal code, chapter 16.44, entitled quote, conditional use permits, close quote, and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA.
Councilman, you said that stood for a good job. Council Middleton, I will second the motion. Motion, second, I will do roll call then. Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi, this is 9A, correct?
Correct, 9A. Are we going to go through each one individually?
Yes.
All right, Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
Mr. Middleton.
Hi.
Hi.
And I, Duane Keg. All right, we'll move on to number B, 9B, which second reading response, uh, pos-, excuse me, possible adoption of ordinance number 868 zoning ordinance creation amendment chapters 16.2, 12, 16.146, excuse me, and 16.59, non-conforming lots, uses and structures.
Right. Thank you. Again, this is the second reading of an item heard at the last regular meeting of the city council and duly publicly noticed. Um, this will create a new chapter and consolidate some of the sections in those previous chapters mentioned. Um, the new chapter created would be 16.59, which would clarify regulations around legally existing non-conforming uses. Um, and so these are basically, uh, uses that have existed and zoning changes occur. And then they become out of compliance with the current code, but they are allowed legal status to protect the property rights for that, those various uses. Um, and so I will just open it back up to questions if you have any since the last meeting.
Awesome. All righty, open it up to the council. Take, the AC is not kicking on, is it?
I, I just have one comment and I forgot to mention it when I took the last item off for correction. I was noticing through here and you see that I highlighted it and circled it, that in the minutes, um, council member McCoy seconded the motion, but it also says he was absent. Did you see that?
I did not.
I'm pretty sure so. If he wanted to make the motion, that would be awesome.
Don't have to.
Okay.
Eric Yeller and I are good friends.
Yeah. That was just.
Thank you, Councilwoman Freeman, Smith Freeman.
It's pretty amazing how you did that.
I think it was council member Middleton.
Yeah. All righty, any, any other questions from the council before I open it back up to the public? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public comment section of this. Is there any public comments at this point in time on the agenda title B, 9B?
Non-conforming lot between two conforming lots, all owned by the same person. Um, would it be the city's interest to do a boundary line adjustment and get rid of the non-conforming lots of future development?
Yeah. So just to, to conforming and one, so again, it's not a back and forth.
No, no.
But I can address that.
If that's a question, then I'll open it back up and then she can respond to that. It's technicality.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Thank you. All right, any other questions from the public at this point in time? Address that question. Back to the council and, and Juliana, do you have a response to that?
So there's a couple of ways that we can deal with it. So, uh, based on the proposed new ordinance, they would be allowed to use that non-conforming lot as long as they were able to meet other safety and health and welfare findings. And so if they were able to still meet the four foot setbacks required by the fire code or different building code standards, then we would allow that non-conforming lot to be built similar to the zone itself. Um, depending on what the individual would want to do, ideally, yes, we would want them to move the boundary line adjustment route. But again, say, for example, you have two conforming single-family lots and then you have a slightly smaller lot in the middle that doesn't meet a minimum parcel size. Um, we would still allow that lot to have a single-family home on it based on that zoning. So it would allow for a variety of different options. But again, at the end of the day, we would still be enforcing fire code, building code and those certain aspects, and then we would be enforcing setbacks as applied as long as that lot is still usable.
Thank you. And we, I closed it, I'm sorry.
The non, I'm sorry.
How about, no.
And if you want, we can email back and forth if you have very specific questions too.
Sorry about that. All righty, any other questions from the council? Do I hear the recommendations?
Oh, did you want to make the motion?
Oh, you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would make, uh, the recommended motion to accept the first reading of ordinance 868 and move to a second. Oh, no, I'm reading then, and to approve at the second reading. This is the second reading, right? I'm reading the minutes.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. I had it wrong in here.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
So, this is Councilman McCoy. I will second that.
Motion, second, we will call Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And I, Duane Keg. We'll move on to number C, 9C. Second reading, possible action, adoption, excuse me, ordinance number 869 zoding ordinance creation. Number 16.57 rezoning and zoning text amendment.
Right, thank you. Uh, again, uh, this is the second reading of an item presented at a duly noticed public hearing um, at the last city council regular meeting. Uh, this would create a new ordinance for procedures and findings for rezoning and zoning text amendment procedure. This is an action that's typically taken by, uh, planning departments to assist property owners who would like to rezone or would like to propose new uses for different zones. Uh, we do not currently have any procedures for that. Um, we, we should have those. Um, so this is basically cleaning up the code and adding that process to make sure people understand what the expectations are of the application and then when it is appropriate to apply that.
Questions? We'll put it up to the public comment section of this and do you have any public comments, concerns? Close it then, the public comment section will open it back up to the council, council. Troops.
This council member Barrett, I will move to approve 9C, second reading, possible adoption of ordinance 869 zoning ordinance creation, chapter 16.57 rezoning and zoning text amendment.
How's the middle, can I have a second motion? Motion was second. Second was correct by Middleton. Just want to make sure. Okay, uh, Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And I, Duane Keg. To D, agenda title, second reading on the ordinance 870 zoning ordinance amendment, chapter 16.58 variances.
Right, thank you. This is the final of the four variances, uh, that was duly noticed at the last regular meeting for first reading and, and move forward. Um, this is amending our current title or, uh, chapter 16.58 variances to clarify the findings to grant a variance, um, streamline the application process similar to the, the other requests. Um, so I'll just open it up for questions if you have any since the last meeting.
Up to the council, questions or answers? Up to the public then. Is there any questions on 16.58 variances? So is it's public comment and then what is the wishes of the council, McCoy? Are there any more questions from?
I, I, this is Councilman McCoy. I'd like to make, uh, the recommended action. I'd like to move to adopt by title only, quote, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wairika, amending certain sections of the Wairiki municipal code in chapter 16.58, entitled, uh, subquote, variances, end subquote, and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempt from CEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act, close quote.
Council Middleton, I have a second motion. Motion, second. Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And I, Duane Keg. All righty.
Thank you. And just really quick, I'm going to probably leave after this, but if you do have any requested data or anything that you need for your cannabis discussion, please feel free to email me. Um, we did keep all of the data that you're looking for in Mount Shasta.
We go through the city manager though. We go to him first, then it comes to you.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you. All right, move to number 10, new business. Since the public meeting, the purpose of the public meeting is to provide citizens pertinent information about community development, block grant programs that allows suggestions to possible projects in this fiscal year's funding cycle. Any grant money received must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low to moderate income persons. The city is not expected to receive excess pro, program income for this program year.
Yeah, thank you, Jason Ledbetter, city manager. Uh, yeah, I'm here to introduce this, uh, CDBG, uh, notice of funding availability, otherwise known as a NOFA. We do have some, uh, member in the audience today from the EDC that has a project that he will introduce. Um, essentially just covering off of what, uh, Mayor Keg said. It is estimated that the funding of the state 2022 CDBG program allocation is approximately $30 million. Uh, it should be noted that the CDBG program will not be accepting any new community development capital improvement project applications for the 2022 funding round. I think you went over the eligibility requirements already. Uh, as the city manager, we would like to just kind of have proposed one idea and we will investigate based off of capacity. But one of those ideas, well, maybe I'm too early here. Do you need to read any more in public? That document that I gave you or?
More down that the public notices hearing this was published in English and Spanish. Anyone with any questions, comments, uh, suggestions during this meeting, please identify yourself, a name, speak and include names. So, yeah, just.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to myself as the number one then. So, uh, one item that internally we're investigating, we are working with city attorney, Mr. Henyon here on a lot of code enforcement items. And we see that there may be an overlap with this grant and utilizing the, that funding stream to pull off a number of abatements that we would like to do in the future. And so that is internally from staff, the one item that we are currently. And so that is internally from staff, the one item that we are currently introducing tonight. And I will then acquiesce to Mr. Quentin here from the EDC.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, my name is Quentin Gaddy, I'm the director of the Siskiyou Small Business Development Center. And I'm here to speak about a potential activity that I think the city council ought to consider looking forward in the future. So just to set a background for the, how the idea for the project developed is, as you guys are very well aware, Caltrans is gonna be doing a fairly substantial project over the next few years. And there's already been some substantial work done on Main Street this year. And people have noticed it driving through town, whether you own a business on Main Street, whether you have to commute, go through, you, you notice the activity. People are already, you know, quite up in arms about it and adamant about the impacts about it. But there's that, I think it's like Bachman Turner Overdrive, they got that song that you ain't seen nothing yet. If you look at the big work coming down the lines with Caltrans, it's gonna be really substantial. So I'm here to speak on behalf of a lot of the businesses on Main Street on doing a business assistance program specifically for construction mitigation. So we would structure the guidelines for this program and have it, so it's designed to catch those businesses on Main Street who are probably gonna be okay and do fine in normal conditions, sans a giant construction project. But that might be substantial enough to impact their cash flow to kill them. And so we're looking at catching some of those who can, you know, fall through the cracks. Some of the businesses are, you know, are gonna benefit. Construction workers have to eat. They have places that they'll need to stay, so some businesses will actually see an increase in sales. Others are gonna see substantial impacts to their foot traffic. And this is gonna be especially acute more so next year, but in twenty twenty four, if you look at the Caltrans schedule, when that work's gonna be completed. This also happens to coincide with being on the tail end of COVID nineteen. So many businesses have already had substantial financial impacts because of that. A lot of their reserves, their rainy day funds, their savings that they had for their businesses have been substantially depleted. They're facing a very tight labor market right now. We have a thousand fewer people in the workforce in Siskiyou County than we did before COVID nineteen. It's very substantial per county, forty five thousand people. And as you're very aware, inflation is killing everybody, it's killing the working class, it's killing the people who have, you know, kids' feet at home and it's killing small businesses. For my restaurants, they're paying twice as much for fryer oil, they're paying twenty to forty percent more on beef. And with the cost of everything rising and then a decrease of sales because of impacted construction, it's perfect storm to knock some of them out of business. See, the idea is that we would look at doing a business assistance program that would be structured in terms of forgivable loans and or grants contingent on meeting several conditions. These conditions would be that for every thirty five thousand dollars that a business receives, they would have to either create or retain one job that goes to a person who's low to moderate income. So you can think of this as like a busboy, a dishwasher, someone who's gonna make less than forty thousand dollars a year in wages. Okay? You can structure the guidelines so that it's not going for the big guys who are gonna be fine, the Steve Clark enterprises, the larger motels, the ones who are gonna be able to weather this pretty easily. You wanna structure it so you have equitable outcomes where you're looking at your smallest, most vulnerable businesses and prioritizing those. You're looking at restricting the use of funds for very specific things that, you know, if you're getting one of these forgivable loans, you're using it for payroll, you're using it for your overhead, you're not using it for some sort of cash pay raise or some sort of ineligible use or some willy nilly investment that's not gonna be meaningful for anything like that. Um, so the underwriting would be specific to each business, it would be based on their revenue and their payroll. We would have different set asides based on different sizes of businesses and different demographic makeups. And we'd be looking at structuring it in a way so that we can try to cast as wide of a net, but not spread it too thin to where it's not gonna have any impact whatsoever. The length and the timeliness of the program, if the city were to submit an application, they just got extended out to August. But given the contracting and the structuring with everything that it would take at HCD, it would probably likely be anywhere from eight to twelve months before you actually saw a contract if you were awarded, it is a competitive process. But that would have enough time to set up a program and get something in place for when the major construction's gonna be occurring, which is next summer and primarily twenty twenty four. That's really the big year that we're gonna be looking at where the damage is gonna be particularly acute. Um, so this is a proposal, the EDC is more than willing to provide any kind of guidance or follow up with any council members or any public members on the idea, the proposal of the program, obviously, we'd be looking for community support on this. I have gotten feedback from businesses that unfortunately, they, a lot of them just can't weather the debt right now. There are some who can get working capital loans and can get traditional lending and they're gonna be A okay. There are some who are just not in that financial position right now. And they do provide a substantial, you know, amount of the tax base, of the employment and just the general liveliness of our community. And so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Councilman, should we ask questions?
I've spoken to quite a number of businesses that are very concerned. You know, I keep telling them it's gonna be beautiful in the future, but yeah, you're absolutely right, they're concerned about the near term and the impacts on the businesses. But they're also concerned about loans, as you say. So this is basically what you're talking about, a grant, correct?
We can either structure them as forgivable grown loans or grants based on, they have to meet certain factors. So you can structure it like the PPP program, for example, that happened during COVID. It shows that, no, you have to demonstrate to me that this actually did go to your payroll and that you didn't reduce your payroll, that you weren't cashing checks for yourself, but telling your workers, oh, stay home, I got construction. You know, that would obviously be a clear conflict of interest, things like that.
No, I understand that, but I think that would be helpful for forgivable loans, I'm not sure how that's different than a grant.
Yeah, it's all about how you would structure the underwriting and the formalities, whether, you know, are you gonna offer it on a reimbursement basis? Or are you gonna offer it upfront and say, okay, you have to prove to me that you made these metrics for it to be forgiven. So it's all about how you structure it and how much you ask for upfront versus on the backend. I would lean for something where you're, you're getting that on the backend because you can expedite that process. The businesses don't have to prepare as much and as much of a concrete plan as when they first get the funds. They can have the funds, they can use them as they need them and it's working capital for, you know, a certain period of time. They can demonstrate how they use them after they use them. Because if you, you know, they had to pigeon themselves into a budget and then, you know, things change, for example. It's, it's just about trying to streamline it and make it as simple as possible. So it's kind of like a formality at the end of the day, are they paying it back? No, it's just whether they have to, you know, prove upfront how it's gonna be used on the front end versus on the backend.
No, that can't. I guess my question or conjunction to what you just asked and how you presented that with the PPP. I know this last couple of years when everybody's going through those, to getting that to the bank and whatnot, those, those. But that money, a lot of businesses did well by getting that money, you know, like you said. I guess my, my concern is the structure, you know, how, like you said, how you would do that, making sure that there's follow up to it was, it was spent accordingly, you know, because the way that was, way that money was presented, a lot of cases, it was pretty easy to to see how you're using that money. Like you said, all you had to do is prove, because I went through that whole process is why, and I know. But it was, you just had to show that you had employees and they paid your employees, pretty much, that's what it amounted to. There was not a lot of paperwork. I mean, there was, but it wasn't that significant. So in doing so, is there gonna be more involvement in that? Because, I mean, there still needs to be some type of accountability to make sure it's being spent the right ways.
Yeah, so there's two different ways to prevent this. And what you're referring to is called waste, fraud and abuse. And it was rife within the PPP program. I would still call the PPP program a world-class program for this reason. Policymakers had the decision, are we gonna go forward with a program that's rife with waste, fraud and abuse, but keeps everything afloat, or are we gonna have twenty percent unemployment? They chose the former route and I think that was the right decision. On this case, we're gonna clear that up on two different fronts. The first is that everyone who receives funds will have to go through a federal department check. And we do this through SAM.gov, which is a federally administered website. It is a little lengthy, it adds an extra week or so to the closing process for a lot of these applications. And nine out of ten businesses that I have do it, need technical assistance for myself, I help them go through the actual system. On the backend, we're actually here in Waireka. We actually know whether they're here gonna be on Main Street and whether there's, you know, orange cones out front. And we're gonna be looking at, you know, their monthly profit and loss statements in particular. We're gonna be seeing, A, was there actually a financial impact? Because I can imagine some cases where some businesses apply for the funds, there wasn't actually a financial impact. And they, they might have to return them, for example, that could be one instance and why you might want to structure it as a forgivable loan. We haven't designed the program yet, these are all good questions to have when you're thinking about that design. On the other end is that we're working with the owners themselves, we're here in Waireka, we know who they are. And that, yeah, we are, we are gonna be underwriting them one by one in that we are staff that aren't cranning through a giant nation backlog of applications where we don't know these people. That really does make a difference. So those would be my answers.
Some of those people did have to pay back when they went out and bought airplanes and, you know, had fake employees and all that. Oh, they are, they are processing claims against those people, I heard.
That's all I have for my question, he answered it, thank you.
So, I appreciate Quentin, what you're doing, I appreciate it. We know that PPP was defrauded to the tune of well over sixty million dollars, not a lot when you're talking about the billions, but who's, how, first off, how do we define overhead? Payroll, I know, but how do we define overhead?
Yeah, so when you, when you, when you build out the program guidelines, you wanna be very specific of what we're looking at, funding. Because this is, like I said, it's disruption. So we wanna look at brick and mortar, we wanna look at things like rent, like utilities, things that can be tied to an address on Main Street in particular. And they're all gonna have different payroll reports, they all look different, whether they come from ADP or they come from Square or they come from Summit Up Accounting, they all got a different flair to them. So you, you set certain parameters and you're looking for certain things and you can really easily build out a cash flow. And I do this with small businesses all the time as a small business advisor, is to help businesses figure out, okay, what actually is your cash flow? What is your overhead? How much do you actually have to clear each month to make a profit, things like that? So that's, that's stuff that we're well versed in at the Small Business Development Center.
Still does not, I appreciate what you're saying, does not answer my question, what is overhead? Overhead is different to different store owners. And as Joan said, I worked for a record company in Southern California when I was eighteen. They had a, they had a twin engine and a single engine and they delivered our records from Davis to El Centro in that, a drive of probably twelve fifteen hours. Couldn't have UPS and been there in two days yet, but that was our overhead, they just said that the owner decided.
And you would, you would call that inventory, correct?
The plane?
Or the, the actual records that you're getting delivered, right? That's part of your overhead or?
Yes.
The cost of delivering it?
The records that you're having delivered every two days are part of your inventory, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all, in what you would generally classify as operating expenses, working capital, you would look at things that, your, your standard monthly expenses, your, your inventory costs, your utilities cost, your rent cost, your payroll cost, your insurance, things like that that are consistent, your fixed costs, not these big, because, you know, a lot of times businesses have to go out and make larger investments and get different pieces of equipment or replace things like that. That's what we wouldn't be considering. We'd be looking at what are your standard operating costs?
So you make a judgment decision, we're not gonna cover airplanes and add gas and things like that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it would, and the underwriting would look different for every business based on their cash flow. So it's gonna be based on what their receipts are and what their expenses are and what they need to cover.
Okay.
So you can expect one really tiny business to, to have a three-month, you know, working capital loan at this number, but one that's much higher volume to be substantially larger. There's ability to have that variance, we're not looking at doing like fixed awards, for example.
If you're, if you're paying, using it, if an employer's using it to pay for wages, what are the guidelines for minimum wage? Because we, we know that guidelines for minimum wage are different with a business of, you know, fifty or more employees than they are with fifty or less. So how is that figured in to the, you know, to what they're asking for and what they're getting?
So what we'd be looking is looking at their overall payroll. The one thing that we'd be verifying is that fifty one percent of their employees would be considered low to moderate income. And that's how you would meet the CDBG national objective beyond that, you're not really working that out.
And you are, like, tell me, as far as see if they're low to moderate income, obviously, you're not asking for their, for their, for their W twos from the last three or four years. So how are you determining that they're low to moderate income?
No, the businesses can self-certify from the payroll. So you, for example, you can give me an hourly wage and a number of hours that employee, that FTE makes and you can aggregate that out for an individual in Siskiyou County, it's gonna be thirty nine thousand fifty dollars a year. That's your LMI limit for an individual. So if their payroll, their hours, forty hours, thirty hours, whatever it is aggregated over the lifetime, a year of employment, you'd be able to calculate that, figure it out.
Okay, and then how do you establish baseline on, on, how do you establish a baseline on each individual business? If you, I mean, I know you're, you're looking at their books and things, but I mean, you know, when I had my last business, it cost me sixteen thousand dollars every month to open the doors. That's what it cost, we had to make over sixteen to have anything in my pocket.
And that, and, and so businesses have to have the ability to produce profit and loss statements that would go back, corroborate for, for example, if it's a three-month period of time, we wanna be looking at that three-month period of time from a historical date because there is significant seasonal fluctuation in Siskiyou County. You're gonna see way bigger sales in summertime.
What kind of expertise do you have in your office to look at, to be able to audit a profit and loss? Because profit and losses can be very, very easily manipulated.
So the, the, the bread and butter of our, of our work is helping businesses prepare those financial statements to get traditional lending. So we've seen all sorts of crazy, wacky P and Ls, you have to corroborate them with, when you do them historically, you corroborate them with tax returns, four, five, oh, six Ts.
Okay.
That would be your, your gold standard.
And then you said it's an eight to twelve month contract, so it's only good for basically for one?
No, no, I'm saying it's gonna take to stay that long to get a contract put together on a, on a, them moving quickly.
Then how long is the program on, just in Waireka, how long would that?
The performance period would be thirty six months from the executed date of the contract. And then it can be renewed upon fifty percent expenditure funds, the city could choose to apply for more funds for the state to get it recapitalized if it chose to.
And is the city, through doing this, are they, are they applying for a certain amount? Or are they waiting to see who applies for the grant and then apply for that amount?
So it has to do with how the city also prioritizes other projects, for example, the code enforcement project. So each city is limited to a certain amount of funds within the whole NOFA, which I believe is one and a half million dollars. So you could do something like a seven fifty, seven fifty split for both programs. Seven fifty is the max for a business assistance program. The floor would probably be around two fifty, any below that and it's not worth starting. And even, and so five hundred would really be the sweet spot, seven fifty would be the preferred based on the volume. And it's better to have it not needed than need it not have it.
And then a double question, who makes a determination whether it's a grant at the, after the fact, obviously, I know, or a loan? And if it's a loan, what's the interest rate and what are the terms of the loan?
So all that can be figured out locally and what we're gonna have to do in the process is, so we're just talking about the application at this point. And then you would design a generic, general program. Upon award, you would actually have to develop program guidelines which have to be adopted by city council. And this would spell out everything from terms of the award, who is eligible for the award, closeout of the award, is there a loan advisory committee, the structure of all of that? All of that has to go through council and be approved by council before the program is actually operating.
And I just, I just wanna follow up the city manager here. We have been working with Quentin every other Friday, staff and I, and we have discussed this idea. We also think it's very important that, you know, I wish Caltrans would step up and make sure these businesses stay afloat. We know that we need to play a role here, Quentin is extremely bright when it comes to finance and this is his bread and butter. But from a staff's perspective, it is extremely important historically to with our assistant city manager and with our current finance director that we are not offering loans, that we are offering grants or completely forgivable loans because the administrative capacity to manage loans and the historical data that we have when this program was used in a loan capacity, it's not good. And inevitably, the city has to follow up regardless of a bankruptcy because we owe the money to someone else and we're the middleman and then we get a bad reputation. So I just wanted to clarify. So I just wanted to clarify that, uh, we would investigate the forgivable loans and look with Rheta and Emily to see how that looked and just verify that, but that we staff do not recommend loans. And the meeting, uh, that Quentin had here with the local business owners, I would say personally, it does not sound like local business owners are interested in loans, obviously, so.
Good, good.
Just, just to go on, on top of, look at it, just, um, so in conjunction to that, uh, with the PPP, that if you basically failed to do your part on that, on that system, then it became a loan, is what it became. So is that something in conjunction to that, was, is that what we would follow then? So in other words, if those people did not, they got, we have a certain criteria, they got that grant or whatever you want to call it, and they did not follow that criteria, now they have that financial responsibility to pay that back. It's then that now becomes with PPP, if it came a loan with the low interest rate, it was extremely low interest rate on that. Is that something, so now going back to what you just said, we're not doing, we're not in the business loan business, but if they fail to match the criteria, then we kind of are.
Absolutely, and I'll let Quentin clarify, uh, I think the same would be said if they didn't meet the grant terms as well. And so it would be, um, what would be the appetite for the council to not offer a program during this construction ultimately? But I'll let, uh, Quentin clarify, uh, the backend of somebody defaulting on the promissory.
So I actually kind of want to answer that question philosophically. And it's that if you run a program where you set people up to fail, you set your program up to fail. And so the aim of that is that there's significant technical assistance provided and that we're working with the owners to clearly identify how they're going to propose how they use funds. But you want to do it in a streamlined way to where they're not bowed down, to where they're thinking, oh, it's not worth it, or this is too much, it scares them away, things like that. You got to find that median point. So you have to provide a significant amount upfront work before you even approve this financing that you have a good idea that it's going to go through. Even though we aren't looking for repayment, we are going to be underwriting it as if we were. That's going to be a very clear condition with it. I'm currently running a grant program, COVID relief, where I'm giving it to them upfront and waiting for them to prove on the backend. I give them six months to tell me how they spent it. Every single one has been successful, because I speak with them on the phone, I work with them on Zoom, oftentimes in person. There's that one-on-one relationship that we have, because we're a small community that I can provide, that SBA loan office was not able to provide.
But just to clarify, to follow up on the mayor's question, what is the general idea of the, the interest rate if someone were to not meet the forgivable loan, uh, compliance guidelines?
There's no statutory answer to that. It's subject to local influence, and so how you guys want to structure it. I would prefer to structure it to make it as painless as possible. So there isn't something that, that's a collections or problem like that. The also idea is that we're not loaning out so much money to over-leverage the city to put it in a position where it's off the hook. A lot of these things, they can be structured to where we don't even issue one lump sum payment. They do a month at a time. Construction's tight for a month. Let's do it, see how it goes. They're not limited to just receiving a single payment. It's all about based on how, how much cash flow capacity the city has available. Because it, the way CDBG works is it does get reimbursed by the state on the backend. And so the city could front that, we could structure it to where you did it a month at a time, and you streamlined the reporting process and had everything auto-populate and had a review process. The challenge on my backend is going to obviously be the capacity, um, when you design features like that. But there's different ways you can approach it, so that the city is not engaging in risky lending behavior. And that's how we want to run the program.
Thank, thank you. Sorry, sorry, I just, I was just playing off of what that question was.
Um, we know latest Labor Department statistics show that there are, for every job opening in the United States, there are two people available for that job, but they're still going unfilled. So my question is, with that in mind, you see a lot of turnover, and you see it here in Wyrika. Businesses are seeing it like crazy. Um, is there any sort of, um, does the proprietor of the business, if they're going to takes in money in order to fund, say, a busboy, say, um, a waitress, say, a gas station tenant or whatever, do, do they have to have, A, the same person if that person quits on them after two months? Are they still in the program? Do they still get to keep it? I mean, because we know that, I mean, everywhere in America, people are, they're, they're taking a job and then they're getting out.
No, we would look at it as in terms of, let's say there's six FTEs and six PTEs, um, part-time employees, um, at the initial onset of the grant, and they had some churn, they, they fired someone, they hired someone, they hired two other people who are part-time instead of a full-time, but at the end of the period, it equates to where they still have six full-time employees and six part-time employees, they're going to be okay. They have less, they're going to have a problem, because one of the federal thresholds for CDBG business assistance is what's called the public service benefit, which is for every thirty-five thousand dollars you receive, you have to support or retain one LMI job.
Okay, yeah, so, so you're basing it on FTEs, which is, that's great. Thank you, Quentin. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your answers. Thank you.
Good questions, Paul. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Um, I understand it would be the city taking out the grant, but you'd be administering funds, correct? And supervising?
I don't know if we've even gotten further to that structure and how that's going to be structured, whether the city, what, because, because right now I'm speaking on behalf of the Small Business Development Center and, and my small business clients. So there are different ways you can go about the relationship, whether it would be us as a sub-recipient or whether the city does open procurement and bids it competitively, um, that, that we would then like have to apply to, for example, just like anyone else. Um, so.
Just to follow up on that for clarification for Ms. Baird, uh, we can chat, we're investigating changing the structure and our relationship on some level specifically with this program, but possibly in the future with the EDC, which the executive director pointed out to us as a proposal, which is, instead of doing sub-recipient, where then we are doing a lot of compliance and management in-house, we can RFP this particular program. Uh, and then possibly, you know, anybody can bid on supplying this. And then the compliance would be given to the agency, um, that won the bid. And so that would alleviate a ton of capacity issues for us internally, not only on this program, but on our relationship with the EDC on a number of other programs. So we're investigating that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about staff time, so.
Which is why, also why I want to avoid loans as well, because the cost of administering that is going to be huge. It's going to be more than the grant pays.
Okay, so, thank you.
Question.
Well, I just, uh, comment is that I'm very pleased, um, that you and the EDC and the SBEC has brought this to the city, because I have had, and I'm sure you've all heard a lot of concerns. Uh, concerns about, you know, how people have been able to do business other than you. Businesses open. I'm just hoping that we can keep our businesses open the eight to twelve months that you say it's going to take to get a contract. So, um, I'm hoping that, I know that dealing with federal government, uh, is challenging and, and you can't be in a hurry, but I'm just hoping that we can, that we can do something to help my local businesses.
And luckily, that construction that's going on, that's going to be starting, it's, it's, it's going to be at Wally World and that from Casa Ramos to Montague. So, uh, our small guys are, you know, okay for the moment.
So, in conjunction, conjunction to that, uh, part of the criteria then is it, how is it going to be structured on, is in the city limits period or is it Main Street? Because of that's who's going to get affected by that? Did we, did that question get asked?
So. I, that, it's going to be an interesting statutory question on the geographic restriction, on whether, uh, they say a, a business on Minor Street is not going to be directly on, can apply for the program. Um, and how much the, the, the local guidelines will be able to, um, uh, ameliorate that uh, while still abiding by the national objectives. I believe you can, and it, it would be an overlay threshold, um, uh, as a requirement, because it's specifically a mitigation program, that there is a clear negative impact. So that's something that I'd have to look a little further into. Um, but I believe in the local program guidelines, you can state that it's going to be specific to a corridor. And many, uh, entitlement jurisdictions, um, which is where I'm going to use my guessing often, these are your larger jurisdictions, you get their money straight from FUD. Uh, oftentimes, they do, do geographic restricted CDBG-funded locations. So I think as, i- if it is something that you're going to do, I think you have to state it in the application at the beginning, that this is going to be geographically restricted to Main Street, just so we don't, like I said, put the, put the city in a, in a, in a, in a position where it's, uh, leveraged in a way where it can't do what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, I guess that's my concern, is because like, somebody on, uh, say, Oregon Street that has a business actually will get more traffic business, but they could, they apply for this and they get it, and it's like, okay, they're getting, they're actually getting more traffic, they're going to possibly get more business, but now they're getting the benefits of this program, and it's really not, shouldn't be for them, to be for people on Main Street that, you know, have a business right there that could, that's potentially going to get greatly affected by.
If I may, I just want to offset that. Um, so this last week, um, I was trying to get up Minor Street, and I'd been at the south end of town, so I thought it'd be easier just hop on the freeway and get off, you know, in the center of town, wrong. They had the center of town, Minor Street was completely blocked off. Um, they were, you know, digging it up, they were putting in the lines, which they're supposed to be doing. But the point is, you couldn't get there from here. I was trying to get off the freeway and up Minor Street. So I couldn't go south, because they wouldn't allow that either. And you couldn't go west, which is up Minor Street. I couldn't get to where I was going, so they were sending me north. And so I gave up going to where I was going to go on Minor Street for that particular time. I disagree. I think that the businesses on Minor Street and on other streets will be impacted when, when they're routing people in different directions and keeping them from going to where we need to go.
So I, like, like I said, I think it just has to be very clear in the program guidelines that you'll have to find some sort of tieback to impacts from the construction. And we'll have to figure out a way that we can prove that and document that, and that it can be fair, is the, is, is, is the key thing. So these are all ideas and good questions to be thinking about when we design, well, if we design the program.
Well, the, the one thing we probably do know is that not the whole length of Main Street or Highway Three is going to be impacted for three years all at the same time. It's going to come gradually. It's still going to hurt business. My, and my business was right there in the old fifty building, but it's not gonna, it's not going to be, they're not going to tie up all of the highway.
Or so they say. I don't know if you've been going up and down, uh, Main Street. I, I avoid it as much as I can.
I go up and down it every day, but I mean, that's a, but that's, that, that's not Caltrans. Uh, Caltrans, I don't think Caltrans can hire, they'd have to have J, they'd have to have three or four JF Shea crews in order to rip that all out at once and redo it, and if they did that, they'd have it done any year. So I, I just don't see that happening, but you could be right. Yes, it could be a nightmare. I mean, it's going to be hard on business.
I think it would be challenging.
Yes.
The best way to keep our businesses, construction or not, is to support them. So if you have to walk a block to support your local sandwich shop, retails or clothing store, whatever, walk the block. It's, I mean, we're going to be in communities a little bit, but, you know, like I said, best way to keep, well, the best way to keep a business is to support them, is my point, is we got to support our local business to keep them, whether it be construction or not construction. We support, we ask for our local businesses to keep them.
So I, is, Calsa has many more questions.
Or three blocks. I could use walking, actually. Thank you.
Back up to the public again?
Just like to add to the complexities of trying to figure out who would receive some of these funds. Mr. McCoy, you mentioned your business was in the Sears Building. Is that correct? You, you could almost say that that location and my location are going to see the same thing, basically. The difference is, there's four lanes where you were, and there's two lanes where I am. So there, from what I've seen so far, there has always been two-way traffic where that location is. When we have one-way traffic and it's on the other side of the street, there's no reason for us to open the door.
No, and that street on the other side of you is now private. It was privatized twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Behind John Richter's building.
Right.
That used to be a public street, now it's a private street.
All right, but.
Right, so my point is though, that even though, uh, we're seeing the same construction because of the lanes and the availability of people to go buy our stores, I, I would say that we're drastically impacted more than the area where there's double lanes in each direction.
Yes.
Um, and, and then as far as the complexity and like deciding your concerns about how he's going to monitor, regulate some of this stuff, I had a brief conversation with Quentin about this. And it's not going to be that difficult if you have to provide your tax returns, your profit and loss, show where you are spending that money. Um, one question would be, do you guys have to be the middleman if people default? Does it have to fall on the city if you default, if somebody defaults?
It, unfortunately, it does. We are the ones that are signing off. Under the current status of our relationship with, uh, Quentin's organization, we are the ones signing off on that grant, meaning we are the ones that pay if, if, if someone doesn't volunteer.
Yeah, it's a shame, because the previous, the PPP that you're talking about, um, I was scared to death to try to utilize that money because of the fear of having to pay it back. Now, the loan for us wasn't worth, um, so by all means, if this goes through, I would be a volunteer, not a volunteer, but, um, applying for it. But, um, like I said, I, I would be scared to death to default on it. I'll be doing every single thing you ask me to do. Um, because I don't know that we're going to survive the eight to ten months.
Right, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, so, good luck. Hope it all works out.
Thank, thank you for that. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
You would actually try to participate in that, so it's good to know. It's actually, it's actually something that would be beneficial for all of us to have more public input on, on that situation. Know if people would take it, you know, actually be able to use it and utilize it in the proper ways.
This is a wild question, but this project is two years from now, going to continue?
No, it starts the middle of June.
Well, the Caltrans part of it will continue on for another two years or so. Based on the information that I just discussed in the, or the difficulty in the fewer lanes in, are in front of my store compared to down the street from us, um, it seems that it would be easy to allocate that funds to your overhead or your, um, employees' costs, the cost of your employees. But what about relocating? Because if I relocated between now and the end of this construction, I could survive. If I am in this, my current location for the next two years, I don't know how I'm going to survive, because we're going to be closed.
And these are questions that, that tonight, we're just intro- introducing the ideas, because it's mandated that we have this introduction of ideas at a city council meeting. So I'm sure that Quentin, as he develops this program, is more than willing to speak to your concerns and vet out what's possible.
Copy that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a, that's a good question, though. Very good question.
You're going to give him a card, Quentin. Thank you.
Alrighty, do we have any other public comments this time? Public comment and bring it back to the council, any other questions? Because right now, at this point, we're not looking for.
My understanding and Ms. Hogan and, uh, Ms. Cindy back there, correct me if I am wrong, but it, this is it. It's just an introduction and we are capable of moving on at this point. Thank you.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
So we don't need a motion?
Nope.
I, I think just to go forward, I just, I'm curious if anybody else would like to help our businesses.
No, it's, I think it's definitely got great potential, so that's good to know. Lots of, lots of good questions. Thank you. Paul had great, tons of good questions.
I don't even have to ask any.
I know. It's like, Paul had, Paul had pretty much most of. I found a couple of questions I dug out. That was it. Thanks, Quentin. Alrighty, then we will move on to, where the, my, uh, number two. Uh, city manager, Janet Title, consolidate and a general, a general municipal election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, Jason Ledbetter, city manager, uh, thank you. This is real formality here and has to do with the fact that every time we have an election, we have the county operate our election rather than us doing it internally. So section one zero four zero three of the Elections Code. Section one zero four zero three of the Elections Code requires the city to adopt the resolution. Requesting the consolidation and setting for the exact form of any question, proposition or office to be voted upon at the election. As it appears, or as it is to appear on the ballot. There is a fiscal impact and that will be roughly somewhere in the ballpark of eight thousand dollars. Uh, but we are recommending the, to adopt the resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Siskiyou to consolidate a general municipal election. To be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, with the statewide general election.
Thank you, Jason, for that better. Um, I'll open up to the council, council, any questions on this?
Nope. And it sounds like a good idea.
Then I'll open up to, no, I'm gonna open up to the public real quick to see, make sure, we gotta. Is there any public comments at this point in time? There's a public comment, open it back up to the council, what is the recommended, recommendations of the council?
Debbie Baird here, I will recommend that we move to adopt a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Siskiyou. To consolidate Wairika's general municipal election with statewide general election, which will be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion, this is Joan Smith Freeman.
Second, I'll do, Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
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 Debbie Baird, hi. Awesome, now we will move to ten C. Prepare ballot measure for November eighth, twenty twenty-two election to convert the city treasurer from elected position to an appointed position.
Alright, Jason Ledbetter, city manager, uh, on the last topic, consolidating the election with the County Board of Supervisors. Uh, it is the intention of staff to bring this opportunity forward. In the past, uh, we had a position of city clerk that was an elected position that was transferred to an appointed position. That took place obviously with approval of city council to be a ballot measure on a previous election. This is very similar, currently we have a treasurer, she happens to be our, somewhere, our assistant city manager. We have, in the past, my understanding, the city of Wairika has always had the finance director in this role. Uh, my understanding is also that the position in and of itself of city treasurer pays, uh, five thousand dollars annually. And so in order to, uh, save our time and energy when we generally have. The finance director have to campaign, it is our intention to bring this to the public to see if we can make this an appointed position. Which we generally would follow the process and possibly update the job description of the finance director. That they would be appointed as the city treasurer as well. And so I will go ahead and read the discussion that Reta has provided for us here for clarification. And then let you guys make the determination, so. In November of twenty twenty, the city put forth a successful ballot measure to change from an elected to an appointed position, the role of the city clerk. During the pandemic, the position of the city treasurer was not considered for ballot measure conversion. From an elected to an appointed position by the current city manager. However, like the city clerk position, many cities have combined the position of the city treasurer with that of the city's finance director. The city treasurer is elected to a four-year term. The incumbent's term expires November of twenty twenty-four, that is Reta Hogan. And while the city treasurer historically had critical functions when the city was originally incorporated. Those administrative functions have been increasingly distributed to other ci- other staff in modern cities, primarily to the finance director. Section one zero four zero three of the Elections Code requires the city to adopt a resolution requesting the consolidation. And setting for the exact form of any question, proposition or office to be voted upon at the election. As it is to appear on the ballot, fiscal impact combined with. The other ballot measure that we are bringing forward regarding the swimming pool or the, pardon my language, the general fund. Half a percent sales tax combined with the county running our election and this document here. We anticipate all of that combined together is roughly eight thousand dollars. So the recommendation or the requested action from staff. Request staff and the city attorney to prepare ballot language for a measure for the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election to convert the city treasurer from an elected position to an appointed position. At the expiration of the incumbent's term of office, which was listed here, November of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, let me know if you have any question.
Council, do we have any questions at this point in time?
No.
Just a, a comment is that this position only pays five thousand dollars a year. So it's not like it's a full-time job or anything like that. I know there are some people that don't like to do away with, uh, elected positions, but this is, um, not, I think that this will be a good thing for this position. Because the finance director, I think that's most of the work we have.
Like all of it. Yeah. I'm gonna open it up for the public comment, is there any public comments at this point in time? Close the public comment section and open it back up to the council. Council, what is the wishes of the council?
I'd make the recommended motion, request staff and the city attorney to prepare ballot language for, uh, measure on the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election. To convert the city treasurer from an elected position to an appointed position at the expiration of the incumbent's term of office.
Middleton, I will second the motion. A second, uh, roll call, Joan, Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Baird.
Hi.
And Idoan K. Thank you, thank you, Reta, thank you, Jason. Alright, we'll move on to D, agenda title, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. List of projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three funded by Senate Bill number one and this one.
And that's here, and Cindy's here, we got the whole game.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, um, it's that time of year again where I come back and. Let you know that we're pleased that we received some more SB one funding for the RMRA this year. So one of the pots of money that we chip seal with. And so this year, I think it was a hundred seventy-one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. For fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, and we'll be putting that to work soon. Um, the list that we have included as part of our SPP for paving program, I think is the last page, the agenda. And as I come to you every year and I tell you this, it's, uh. Subject of change, whether things happen in the streets, um, I have one street actually that's. Uh, on this list that may be pushed out a year, so it's always a moving target until we get there, but we always find another one to replace it, so. The part of this funding is that we have to adopt the list of projects, so. But it's, it's not such a stickler type of, of, uh, process that we have to actually stick to exactly the list, so. So, uh, as it is every year, I'm here to ask that you, uh. Consider adopting. The SB one.
So can we ask of the, um. I see you got down here the SB one update for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, these list of streets there. Where is Elena Street?
Elena, it's one of those side streets that nobody ever really sees.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of those, those side dead ends, I believe it's.
Where is it, is that by Terrace?
By Terrace?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm like, I lived here all my life, I don't know where that's at.
Yeah, I came up in the office last week too, someone was asking about Elena, it's actually, it's not a dead end, it's a connector up between two. So it's just one block and you don't really see it, when you're just a local driving around town.
I guess.
Terrace and scenic?
Hmm, yeah, it just ties, ties together there.
I thought it was an L.
We have a number of those, people tinker streets, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Right, any questions from the council?
I wanna thank, uh. Mr. Bray for bringing this to us, I appreciate that, it shows that we're, that the public works and the city is working toward getting streets. Keeping streets healthy for another five to ten years by going through and, and, uh. And, uh, doing these streets, so, and we also unders- I understand that it's a fluid list, things can fall off, things can jump on depending on how much money you have. How much weather you have and then how many issues you have with sewer on Main Street. I know, I know you've got, you're working on that like crazy for three weeks, so, you know, unexpected, so, uh, thank you, Ray, to us, and thank you, Cindy, also.
Great, any other questions from the council?
Good job, I, just one question, so, you know, Measure C money comes in too.
Correct.
Right, so is this not only SB one, but a little bit of, uh, Measure C as well?
Yeah, that's how we backfill and we actually get up to these bigger, larger chip seal projects is by. Banding all those pots of money together.
Remember, we promised that.
And we have, and we performed it every year, I've got an update, I was showing the city manager this afternoon, I've got some more math to run. In our Street Saver program, which tracks our PCI. And, um. Because we only survey it once a year. We go through occasionally every quarter or so and dump in what we think we're gonna do and we play with the numbers on our priority list and see where it's gonna get us. I'm anticipating a ten-point jump after this, uh, RMRA and then Measure C, so we, we started off when I, when we. Explained the lack of road funding, local road funding for Measure C. And we were at a, a PCI of forty-eight and falling. But in two years of Measure C, we went up to a fifty-eight. And then we, we held there for a few and dropped down because, uh, COVID, last year we didn't chip seal. So our PCI dropped more than an average point drop, but we're gonna spike it back up again and I'm, as I told, uh. Mr. Ledbetter this morning, I think we're gonna see another ten point, which gets us up there, so we're in fair, which is great. When you look at the whole PCI, fair is pretty good for where we started, because we were looking at a complete failure of our roads. When we initially got the Street Saver program, so it has made a lo- a big difference in the public works world and, uh, it helps Ben. And Tyler and I really schedule out what we're gonna do for the biggest bang to the buck, because these pots of money, it looks like a lot of money, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, but that really doesn't go far. In the paving world, but in chip seal land, we can get a lot, a lot of black streets and.
Awesome.
You get them done.
Alright, well, if there's any other questions from the council, I'll ask, if there's any questions from the, open it up to the, the public. Public, any questions at this point in time? This is a work in progress, but at least it does give us some type of structure, so that's good. Other comments? Those public comments and open it back up to the council, what is the wishes of the council?
Oh, one, one more thing.
Oh, yes.
I want you to know, I do get, get comments from a few people when you post, brought to you by Measure C out there on your projects.
Yes.
It really is good outreach, yeah.
So now you have to say SB one and Measure C, put Measure C first, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of projects have it that built into the requirement, you'll see the, the lease Lennox sign, the sign up says where the fund is coming from and that.
Okay.
So right, when we got Measure C, we wanted to let the community know and kind of thank them, just let them know, just, we're out here doing it.
Yeah. This is ten D, what is the wishes of the council, this actually is. Yes.
Okay, the recommended, uh, motion moved to adopt a resolution approving a list of projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Funded by SB one and Measure C, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
Councilman McCoy will second that motion.
So, McCoy, alright, Joan Smith.
Hard for Measure C.
Joan Smith. Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Baird.
Hi.
And Idoan K. Awesome, thank you, man.
Alright, thank you, we'll go spend it.
Thank you so much.
Don't make those roads pretty.
Okay, now we are, uh, the number eleven city manager of Staffordworth.
Uh, thank you, Jason Ledbetter, city manager, I'm gonna start here at the bottom while I still have them here, um, I just wanna recognize. The Public Works Director and the Municipal Projects Manager. Uh, as well as the entire Public Works team for the info that was packed into the most recent newsletter and the utility bill, I don't know if you saw that. But, uh, we had three really great city projects listed in there as well as the state projects, so the Main Street Water Improvement Project. The Water Supply and Storage Improvements Project. And the East Lennox Street Water, or, uh, East Lennox Street Waterline Replacement and WTP Filter Improvements Project. And then combined with that finally, the State Caltrans Highway Three Project, which has dedicated plenty of city staff time here between, uh, Cindy and Matt. Helping organize that with Caltrans. Uh, and this is really kind of the tip of the iceberg here with so many projects that Public Works has in queue. And I just want to thank them personally because. Critical infrastructure is really exciting for Matt and me, but I know it's not that exciting for the general public until. The toilet doesn't flush properly, so. What Public Works is doing in this city right now is going to reap benefits for decades to come and I don't know if people understand. How many projects Matt has queued up in relation to every other agency incorporated city in this county, it is incredible. And I just wanted to point that out, so. Uh, on six two twenty-two, I had a, a meeting with, uh, the planning director and also members of Behavioral Health or Health and Human Services. To discuss the homeless issue and, um, how we were looking for different solutions, we're currently working with the county, um, around the Home Key Project. Uh, there's more to come on that as we flesh that out with the county, that's obviously the turnover of a motel that everybody currently is doing. And all of the funding available for that, so we're kind of working with the county in conjunction, whether or not we play a role in any of this. Um, we are trying to find solutions as the county seat because we are the most impacted by this crisis here in the city of Wairika. Um, as you guys know, uh, I went up to Central Point and met up with Chris Clayton. Uh, so for those that don't know, Chris is a local Wairika resident who is also the city manager for Central Point. I had a nice long meeting with Chris and he has invited me to attend the Southern Oregon City Manager Meetings he holds on a monthly basis. Um, obviously, we have different laws between this, the states here. Uh, but just the sharing of information, him being a member of the public here in our community. And he came right, he's roughly a, a year or two older than myself, but he came right out of college, right to that city. So he just has a lot of information and a lot of failures, a lot of successes, so. Very lucrative meeting and, uh, the start of, I think, a great relationship between Central Point and the city of Wairika. Obviously, we heard from Quentin earlier, uh, he had a meeting on five twenty-six here in the chambers that he led with, uh, members of the public business owners on Highway Three. Obviously led to his introduction here tonight. Um, the planning director, the public works director and myself. Uh, we had a, just a substantially a great meeting, a meet and greet with the Karuk staff, we went down to Happy Camp. Just trying to get a better understanding of the overlap with some projects that. Public Works already teams up with them on certain projects, but there's opportunities for fire mitigation. There's opportunities around our general plan and their general plan, so just trying to bring the agencies a little bit closer together and communication and that has led to. Um, more than likely some quarterly meetings that we will stay in tune, that I think the next one we're gonna have here in, in Wairika. The Wairika Safe, uh, the Wairika Fire Safe Council Meeting was on five twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. I brought in a flyer here that, uh, people should take a look at, it's the pre-evacuation prepar- preparation steps and, uh, home evacuation checklist. That's available right here at the interest. I also suggest to members of the public, that meeting is on the fourth Tuesday of every month at six thirty, you can engage that via Zoom. Or you can now be in person at the Forest Service Headquarters on Main Street in Wairika. Obviously, there's a lot of concern over fire in our town and I highly suggest people. Reach out and engage that as a member of the public, we can always use more support in, in planning. Uh, the League of Cities, five twenty, I think, it's been a while since we've had a council meeting, it feels like, so. Uh, Joan and I attended that meeting in Mount Shasta, uh, which is always good for networking. I think we got a lot of good information, the mayor pro tem from Reading was there and they were discussing a lot of issues that they're currently dealing with and then of course. Mount Shasta hosted and did a really nice job and they had a presentation as well. I attended on five nineteen Pacific Core Wildfire, Wildfire Advisory Board Meeting. They have what they call the PSPS, which is the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Area. We luckily do not fall in that, that affects people really south of us in the corridor, like the wind corridor, that they shut off power. It does not mean that in the future, we may not, we may actually fall into a PSPS, but all attend these meetings and let you know. There's definitely the possibility of a rate increase coming from Pacific Power to those of us that live in California, unfortunately. Uh, on 5/18, we met with the county once again with Sarah Clark, uh, to talk about PLHA. And, uh, we have reached an agreement with them and we are helping organize everybody's resolution to pass their money to the county because they are the social services. They have a good plan. We incorporated Sarah Springfield, so she knows that the intention is to take care of her program. And so Emily and Josh will be reaching out to the other local cities as well as myself to organize that resolution that needs to get passed through. And then finally, you could see, uh, back to wearing the mask, COVID, whether you like it or not, the ripple effect here in Yarica. As an employee gets sick, possibly affects other employees. And then all of a sudden we lose our entire department or we lose City Hall, we lose all kinds of staff. So we currently did have a couple, uh, folks test positive, uh, that I was around. So I am wearing the mask for 10 days because of that. Uh, I am, have no symptoms, but it just, that FYI, it will affect us whether we like it or not. And it sounds like from my understanding, we're seeing numbers rise again here in the city. So that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Justin. Any of your, any of the staff?
Covering it for everybody here. So I think we're good.
I know the two chiefs have been busy.
But feel free if you guys, if anybody else has any comments.
You haven't been doing nothing. You guys just been sitting around.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Good.
What time?
And if I remember right, Debbie said she was helping you cook.
You are.
Have you tasted my food?
Okay. Is there bacon? I'll be there.
That works too. Awesome. I'm flexible like that.
All right. No other staff reports in. Nope. All right. So I'll go back to the council, council. Paul, Mr. McCoy?
I'll go ahead and go. Uh, I, I want to reiterate what, after I went through COVID and what, uh, Jason said, I know the minute I got back from the East Coast, I talked to my nephew who works in the hospital down at, uh, University Hospital in San Diego. And they had had, uh, I think the city had 1,900, uh, cases that week. Uh, he got back on a Monday and they had 1,900 cases and they had four deaths in the first four days. So just back, just take precautions. Um, I'm gonna, um, I would like to go national here for a minute. I would like to send my sympathies out to the Uvalde victims of the shooting, the kids and the adults that were killed in Texas. So it's always tragic when that happens. I'm not taking sides. I'm just saying it's very difficult. I would want to go through that. I also want to reiterate as we continue with, um, war, uh, in the world, our, my support of, uh, free and independent Ukraine. D-Day was yesterday. It was the 78th anniversary, I believe. I can remember my neighbor OJ LaBaron, the man who, um, worked very, very diligently on the Fall River Project and flew to San Francisco. I mean, to Sacramento Weekly to meet with people and everything. And OJ was a tank commander in D-Day. And, um, he had said in the first, first, uh, two weeks, he had three tanks shot out from under him and his crew. He came and spoke several times at Jackson Street, although I could still, uh, couldn't fit into his uniform, but he was pretty darn close. Let me tell you for, for being 85, 90 years old. So you know, it's those people, um, um, we have a veteran here in Lorenzo and we appreciate your service Lorenzo, but we do also know this is to celebrate the people that gave their last full measure of devotion, uh, didn't come back. But you know, there, there were, there's still some living legacies around that did come back. They're, they're in their late 90s now. I was very pleased when I stepped off the airport in Sacramento coming from JFK to, uh, walk to the baggage handling area and see a, a, a very nice presentation on the big screen of Siskiyou County and why you should come here.
Really?
Very, very nice. Yes. Colorful and yeah, it was probably in the Sacramento International Airport. Yeah. The first time I've ever seen it, it was gorgeous and there were like 500 people standing or five, 600 people wait for their luggage.
Discover Siskiyou?
Probably was Discover Siskiyou. Yeah. So you know, I mean, it's, it's nice to see that outside of just people telling you that. So. Um, uh, Beacon of Hope is ready for drywall. The last, uh, two weeks, uh, Steve and I have been working on, uh, getting insulation and things done. And then, um, Triest Chaw and, uh, Judge Langford came in and helped us. And, uh, I want to say a very special thank you for, to Dwayne for really helping out with the electrical because we wouldn't be ready for drywall if you and, and, and other guys hadn't helped.
Did they, did they state real quick, did they state if they're going to be able to open it up this year?
Don't think so. They're, they're going to be meeting, they're going to be meeting with Jason and the, and the, and the city, uh, um, to talk about plant, to talk about what's the minimum, what do they need to, to do an occupancy permit? But I, you know, I don't know that it's gonna, because we still, they're still, they still need drywall.
Yeah.
Finish plumbing, finish electrical and then two 60-foot concrete ramps outside just to get into the building. So. But, um, I, I want to say thank you to the crew. I've, I've talked to Matt a little bit about this, but not only to your crew, but the crew on Main Street because they've run into some issues and I know what Jane's saying. I've had to, uh, or Joan is saying, Councilman Smith Freeman. Councilman Smith Freeman. I, um, I've had to run around several times and, you know, and they make it, you know, they make it difficult, but it's, you know, we'll get through it. Um, in, as I'm looking forward to seeing Arby's open in, um, August because that's what the word is from Arby's. The car wash seems to be going along well that John Richter and his, um, Las Vegas investor are building. And I look forward to Manny starting his, uh, project on the far end of town. Caddy Corner from the USA Gas Station. And I also look forward to the new, um, uh, gas station mini mart and the other things that are going to be going in, in between the Holiday Inn Express and the current truck stop. And thank you very much.
Good job. Mr. Milton.
Well, actually it's graduation time. So I'll just say congratulations to all the 22, 2022 graduates out there. Exciting times. And so wish them well and.
At least they're able to have a graduation.
Yes. 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 So that's going to be good. And I don't know. Sometimes it's like a reminder because a lot of these kids are graduating that are like one years old. When I sold their parents' houses and now they're, I'm like, oh, wait, they have a high school or wait, you're a grandparent. Yeah. So. I know. I know. Is that crazy? I was, that's getting up there now. It's like when you scroll down for your age, you know, you keep going down and down and. Used to be kind of to the top and now it's way to the bottom. Um, so congratulations to all the graduates. Yeah, Arby's is behind. Um, I have a relative that's going to be the general manager there and, um, she's working in there. Well, she's been in their climate falls and Metford location because they own several of them. And I think they're pushed back. She's not going to be out there until mid-July and, uh, for her hiring. So they're pushed back a good month and a half, but they're coming along. And I just noticed there's a, I didn't know there's a new smoke shop going in to the shopping center that used to be Route Automation and California Outdoors. So that, yeah, I saw signs and I'm all, oh, wait, that's this new smoke shop, which is like all of a sudden appeared. So, um, so that was filled. And then, um, um, a lot of people keep asking me about real estate, thinking that we're into a, going into a recession and a bad market because the rates went up. It did put us in a little bit of slow down, some price reductions, but we're still in low inventory. So our houses are still moving. Instead of two days, we're going about seven days on the market for a decent house. So it's there, it's still selling. There is people moving here because, um, I have a couple out of town clients are moving from the Reading cottonwood area. They're selling houses, but, um, and they kind of don't want to have their retiring age. They don't want to have house payments. And what you can get in Reading is like, not very good in that price range of 350. You get a fixer upper now and ready. And so they're wanting to get out of the heat. So they're coming north either to, and Southern Oregon's way high. So Siskiyou County is kind of that midpoint between Sacramento to, and so it's been pretty interesting. But, um, so this is like a way. I think one thing I want to touch on, and then we can definitely work on exploring is what we talked about, about fire department and getting paid for the calls is, um, I know Cherry's been up here, Chief Cherry's been up here, um, time and time again. And the difficulties and my point was personal with my parents both having ambulance rides in the last, my mom a couple of years ago and my dad, you know, a few months ago. They live in South, you know, just outside the city limits a little bit. And 911 call, CDF's first, of course, South Yarica was second. And they do all the work. Mount Shasta ambulance comes along, few minutes later. They stay, all, they've already checked everything with my parents, asked them everything. Mount Shasta ambulance comes along. They load them up and then we get a bill from Mount Shasta ambulance or, you know, thinking that my parents have insurance to sell it in. And I, I feel sorry for people who don't because that bill for two miles was $1,800. And you know, South Yarica don't get that. CDF, yeah, they're paying employees, but they reap the benefits of being charged. And I'm thinking to myself, wow, and our, you know, fire department does the same thing. They're doing all the work before that ambulance gets there, but they're getting the compensation. I hope we can really work on that.
Yeah.
And bring that back.
If it pleases the mayor and the council, staff will work to look at the recoverable costs for the fire department on, uh, specific calls. Uh, and we will at a future date, bring something forward for discussion.
Sounds good with the council?
Yes.
Something definitely need to, need to push forward on this. Like you, uh, my dad, who's handicapped, we had to call the ambulance numerous times. Paul, like I said, fire department showed up. Poor dad, you know, broke his ankle a couple of times. Right? And he was just getting to the stage where he was, you know, to still stand, but that was about it. He broke his ankle a couple of times. Of course, like I said, the fire department, thank God the fire department was there because dad was about 250 pounds. It's a little bit, little bit tough for me to lift. I did it one time and ended up with a hernia operation. So I, I think it's good that we have the fire department to help us out on these situations, but there should be some type of compensation for us as a city.
Yeah. Yeah. So again, I just want to, you know, talk about our businesses and with the construction and just, I know it's going to be inconvenient. Everybody's going to get mad and go home and not want to go downtown, but I just want to encourage everybody to please just support your, continue to support your businesses. Even if you have to, I walked to, you know, down the street to support a business. Yeah, it was difficult to get to, but I still did it, you know? I didn't want, I was, oh, let's do that tomorrow. And I said, no. So I parked and it was nice that I walked, but just, you know, when people, I, when people just say, I get tired of hearing, oh, business don't stay here. Well, they don't stay here because we don't support them. And we're going to have to really make an effort the next couple of years to support our business, you know? But just not even after two years, support our bus, local businesses. So they remain to stay here. We're seeing a lot of good things in Yarica coming, uh, and let's keep them. So, um, I will end with that.
Yeah. That's a good point. Like I said, through this whole next couple of years, we definitely need to support our businesses one way or the other. We have to go out of our way to walk up a couple of blocks to get there, you know? It's crazy. Your, your neck of the woods has been real crazy this last couple of weeks.
My neck of the woods.
Your neck of the woods too, yeah.
Our neck of the woods.
Yeah. This has been, yes, absolutely. We gave each hand, so I know.
I know I'm out of order, but both of them brought it up. That's all I need. You know me. Three words, I'm.
You're fast like me. I'm.
So, uh, this is Chief Gilman. So he brought two points with the graduations and the school shooting stuff. The city manager and I have been working. We actually have an auction that's been in the schools. So I just wanted to let everyone know, we're not publicizing it. We haven't put it on Facebook. We're not trying to make a show of it or anything else. But because of these issues and with graduation coming, we do have an auction that's been coming in over time and working in the schools. And actually is there for most of the day in the different schools. So I just want.
Thanks. Thanks, chief.
You still have time. You come back down and tell us something else.
All right, Joe.
Um, okay. Well, actually, uh, Councilmember McCoy brought it up, but I would just like to say that I actually know. In fact, I think we all know a World War II veteran that at the Elks Lodge meeting, we gave him special recognition. He is a World War II veteran. He did serve during the Great War. And so, and he, uh, yeah, he, he gave us some of his memories, but not all of them. I think some of them were a little too difficult, uh, to talk about. Uh, anyway, on May 18th, because you're right, it's been a while since we've been here. Gracie Bennett was the speaker. I had her come as the speaker for Rotary and she talked about Hibbert Field. We think about her at the museum, but she also works really hard on the baseball field, Hibbert Field. And she talked about the funding that she's been able to get, and she's also here. Anyway, the funding that she's been able to get. And then she was looking to Rotary to maybe help us some more of the funding. And she talked about why, because she was asking for funding and everyone knows that they had some, but not enough. So, uh, and her kids, of course, played ball there and I think her husband did too. And then her husband and I think his brother went on to play major league baseball. For the what?
The Phils.
For the Phils, yes. The Bills, the Phils.
Had a long time out there and I think.
Yes, yes. Um, also, uh, there were two top 100 events and, and, uh, Yarica Rotary and Montague Rotary go together to put those on. It was one for the elementary school on the Thursday night for the eighth graders. And then on the 19th, it was the high school. Lots of money was given out for scholarships. I don't think there was one student that walked away without a scholarship. And I'm really proud of the Elks, the Elks gave scholarship and I think just about Rotary gave scholarships, both Yarica and Montague Rotary. There were, there was a lot of scholarships given out. So our kids, uh, I think our kids were treated well. I'm really proud of them. And COS comes, uh, comes as well. And some of the kids that don't have other scholarships are welcomed, uh, for their freshman year for free. You know, they don't charge them anything. Siskiyou Promise. Siskiyou Promise. That's right. That's Siskiyou Promise is their program. Um, also, uh, Jason already talked about it, but on the 20th, we attended Sacramento Valley Division quarterly meeting. Folks, it's not going to get any closer than, uh, unless we've had it here before, uh, in Yarica. But, um, we represented Yarica, right, Jason?
Yep.
You were supposed to come. We paid for your lunch. They had a, they had a really nice lunch. It was, it was, um, it was all, Mount Shasta was all really good pure food. It was, you had your choice if you want to be this or me. So they did a really nice job and of course they had. I didn't even ask them if there was any sugar.
Sure. What I was doing that day.
Oh, oh. Oh, anyway, uh, yeah, it was, it was really nice. And I think Jason went on a tour.
No, I did not, but I did go on a tour of, I think, the first, um, cannabis grow facility, um, with some ties. The owner of that location owns a fertilizer business up in Southern Oregon, but he was born and raised in Scott Valley, came from a cattle ranching family. Uh, and as it happens, our planning director worked with him because he was the first with that ordinance. And, um, so there was a lot of good information. It was, uh, really interesting. The mayor of Mount Shasta joined us and a couple other. Sue Tavallera, of course, was. And the, and the current mayor of weed was also, um, on that tour. So.
Yeah, it was, uh, really good. I wasn't able to make it. They had, uh, tours beforehand and then afterwards they had another tour down at the Fish Hatchery. And I didn't realize that the Mount Shasta Fish Hatchery was the first fish hatchery in the state of California, maybe in the nation. Anyway, and so they had a nice tour of that and then a tour of the museum. So that was really nice. They had some good information on fire and on water, on drought. Uh, they had some really, really good information. So I thought that was a really good tour. Um, also, as you all know, I was in the Murder Mystery Theater. It was pretty successful. There were a lot of events going on that night. I think you guys were doing the bar for, thanks for the fair. May 21st? Yep. May 21st. May 21st. Anyway, uh, but it, it turned out really nice. And, uh, and we made a little money, but we probably went out for scholarships. Um, anyway. Probably went out for scholarships. Um, anyway, so that, that was really nice. Uh, there was pool meeting, one or two maybe, and then there was a local transportation commission um, as well. There was one thing that I participated in and I've done it before that was really, I thought it was just great. It was good preparation for, for high school students. It was called the Bite of Reality and uh, the credit union puts it on. So the credit union, and they're so kind to call me, and the, the students come in, they get a packet and the packets gives them a, an identity. And in the identity, they have a career and it shows how much money they make a month. And if they're married and if they have children and, you know, what they can afford to spend, then they have to go from table to table. They have to buy a house. They have to buy furniture. I was at the furniture and housing goods uh, table and we're supposed to talk it up and talk them into, you know, buying more. So we were supposed to upsell.
Not that I know what that is.
And some of those kids came back and said, I'm nine hundred dollars over. I've got to cut back. So it was really cute. And then, and you know, they had the opportunity of buying the very best furniture, middle-range furniture and then going, uh, getting uh, free furniture from their parents. All the boys wanted the free furniture and the girls wanted the new furniture for the most part. No, anyway, it was, it was wonderful and the kids were great. We've got such great kids. And then um, that same day, then I went straight from that to Rotary and we had our students of the month and we had about eight from uh, May, let's see. And we give them, you know, we give them a nice certificate and then they tell us about their plans for the future, you know, where they're going to be going to school. And we've just got such great kids in our town. We're so fortunate. Uh, and then there was the Rotary debunking and those of you that know Jerry Jarab, he's the president. And if you know anything about Rotary, you know that that's one of the biggest events of the year uh, that, that we do put on. Of course, it comes out of our pocket. All the money that we make goes like for the um, have you seen, actually you have, you seen the concrete tables, the new tables uh, at Green Horn Park? That comes from Puerto Rico Rotary. And we've done it the last two years and we're going to do it again. Jerry Jarab was the president, the incoming president. And uh, it's the first time he's been president of Rotary, first time. He's been, he's been, he does um, top one hundred every year, but he's never, I called him and I'm the one that talked him into. He can't present. I said, Jerry, have you been president of Rotary? How would you like to be? Let me think about it. I'll call you back. And he accepted the challenge during COVID. So he's such a good guy. Lori Caldwell will be the incoming president and July first. And I know she'll do a good job. She is amazing. She gets stuff done. We had a finance committee meeting all night and, and Jackson and Rheta and uh, talked about a lot of stuff that we saw tonight. Uh, and the Portuguese picnic. My daughter, my granddaughter, my thirteen-year-old granddaughter was in the Holy Ghost Festival and the parade. And my daughter-in-law is a past princess and my grandson is the flag bearer. So of course I was there taking pictures on Sunday. That was so much fun. And uh, graduation, my um, my friend's daughter, who happens to be uh, my hot daughter, uh, her, her daughter is graduated from high school. So we will all be here on Saturday. That'll be fun. Yeah, it's been a busy, gosh, how many days? It's been three? Been really busy. Other stuff too, but that's enough.
I used to have that three-week break though.
It is. I know, I was thinking, wow, I should go someplace, but I didn't. I stayed home and went to meetings.
All right, mine is very short. I did go someplace. I went up to Salem. Actually, that's kind of important. Your sister, I went in, saw an older sister. And I have to admit, because Oregon has legalized every everything, the uh, their shops bring another level of class, I'll say, to their dispensaries. I didn't go in any of them, but when I drove by, they were, they looked just like furniture stores or they looked very professional. And I was impressed with, I don't know, it brings a different standard, a different feel to it, and I appreciate that. But anyway, my report. Um, the bar on May twenty-first, the Lincoln Dinner, Alex Garlatos that did the movie with Clint Eastwood, he got into that and was speaking on that. I'll tell you, if you get the chance to hear him, you should hear the real story. That's right, you didn't mention. Well, there was a group of them, but uh, the, it was just really good. And I, he signed two books and they auctioned them off there and they went for over a thousand each, if I remember correctly. So um, it was a good event to work at.
A lot of politicians there.
Yeah.
The Dollys were there, both of them.
No, not. There were a bunch.
There was a couple other people, but yeah, it was a pretty big event.
It was nice. Um, little note about insurance, Collier's Insurance. I'm the bookkeeper treasurer. The Collier Insurance increased from last year a little over three thousand to eight thousand. Collier Insurance. I was shocked. Yes, I was shocked. So we're having a review done and they might be able to bring it down five hundred. I got to deal. Yeah. Oh, my word. That's crazy. Um. Okay, and I I, I won't look at you, Chief Gilman, so you don't think I'm talking directly to you. But I do get a feeling that the um, homeless situation is increasing because I dropped my car off for um, a detail once in seven years. I don't want to make a habit of it. And. It's a worse truck. It's a worse truck. It did, but it was well worth it. They did a wonderful job. But anyway, I walked back to the shop afterwards because I chose to. And um, there were a couple of uncomfortable times that homeless people were walking behind me. And I don't mind until they start flailing their arms and cussing and um, it, it's uncomfortable. I don't know about you men, but it certainly is uncomfortable for a woman to have to experience that. And I live around the corner from this gentleman's shop. And I'll tell you, over the weekend, there was screaming going on all night long. And I'm sure it was over by the bridge, but the next morning uh, YPD had a truck going in the field at the end of Lennox Street. And they're a block away and I heard him like he was just outside my window. And it's not like I haven't heard profanity before. It's just that if you don't know their state of mind, you don't know where it's going to stop. So it's very uncomfortable. I hope we figure out. I hope the state government figures out a way that we can handle this so that we're taking better care of our citizens that take care of us. So.
Brief, a brief.
I don't know that there's anybody in this town that goes from one end of the town to the other more than me every day of the week. I, I literally, every single day for at least two weeks, it seemed like, I saw up to five new people on the streets of Puerto Rico every single day. And a friend of mine mentioned that he knows somebody in Sacramento that's working on the homeless situation down there. And he mentioned that Sacramento is sending people this way with the one-way bus ticket. I did a little homework. San Francisco is doing the same thing. And under a program that if you have a, a relative basically living in this neighborhood. So my thought is, I, I saw people that are, would scare me to death. The gentleman that's been causing me chaos is not scary compared to some of the people that I've seen. If, if that's the case, if, if they're getting bussed to this location and if that's going to continue because of the rural areas spread out, I suggest sorry to throw my input in, that somehow we determine if it's possible to receive funds from those locations that are sending us, their homeless on a one-way ticket or invest in some home, one-way tickets and send them back.
So there's.
It was crazy.
So I'll, I'll talk to you about that later because I do have some information.
Okay, I'd love to know what's going on.
I did do some research on some funding to do what you're talking about.
I'm done.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Everybody's giving you a report, sorry.
That's okay.
No, there is, I'll talk to you about that. There's some, some interesting things I discovered on that. Yeah, there, there is. I don't want to get into detail right now because it's a long conversation. So um, but anyways, um, actually, Bob, is there anything you want to make comments about? We skipped right over you. Not a thing? Okay, well, that was really. I'm just, I'm not going to go into detail of things. It's getting late. Anyways, we, we've said it's been a long few weeks. We had some good meetings, like I said, with uh, Dr. Circlard and stuff and trying to get some stuff figured out on the homeless, which is good. Uh, one thing that they, they were talking about is actually getting a shelter going to a low-barrier shelter going. Uh, they get the grant funding. That's, we'll find out in July if the grant funding comes through for, this is through the county, excuse me. Uh, if they get the funding, then they'll look, go optimistic on the low-barriers shelters that they're going to be doing too, so. Uh, there's certain criteria. It's, it's not just like a standard open one where you can have any homeless person coming on the side. It's a little detailed, but at least it's, it's a step in the right direction. So.
But they're still leaving the scary ones on the street.
No, this is one that actually takes in the lowest, um, the lowest tier. Uh, whereas, you know, we have crossroads that would be kind of graduation to getting ready to enter back into, you know, having a job and all that, or that, that would probably be part of that. Uh, this would be the first step. And then we're also investigating the second step so that we would have an enforceable critical infrastructure ordinance and enforceable mechanism with the YPD because we would then have shelter where if you didn't want to go there, we could request that you exit the city.
Real positive thing we've got that we've been, all of us been working on. It's, it's great because like I said, with the county now starting to step up to the plate, it's been really good. With the low-barrier shelter, the home key, possible home key, which is possibly what Jason explained earlier, which is purchasing of a motel. That up for homeless and then going into the uh, the crossroads, which is apartment complex for people experiencing homelessness or possibly risk of being homelessness, experiencing homelessness. And then with uh, with our city attorney, he's been working on a, a critical infrastructure ordinance that's going to really hopefully uh, make our town safe. So it's, it's, there's a lot of elements that are coming together and hopefully becoming together in the next few months. It's going to hopefully uh, make a big change on the homelessness that we're experiencing. And there is, like you said, um, that the uh, shipping of, of individuals, yeah, there is. The word's out that Puerto Rico is kind of an open door right now. And we have approximately, what, twenty three camps, I think, twenty-three camps up by my house now. So. Campus drive, campus drive up there. Well, they have. So it's, we, once we get all these elements put together, hopefully the beacon of hope can get theirs going, get their shelter going and then see some type of uh, urban campsite with a combination of all these elements coming together. I think we're going to see a, a significant change here. So that's what we're hoping for. Did um, Chief Gilman got to participate in the, the dare program? I want to add that. Did you end up going to Jackson Street the next day? So we did, uh, to the sheriff's department, um, Mr. Jacobson, um, they do the dare program and they, we got to participate in the graduation on that. Yeah, it was good. I've done a couple of them now, the graduation for the dare. So that was good to see the kids involved in the, the, the pro, that program and keeping them hopefully walking down the straight path where they don't go down the wrong path, hopefully in the future. So um, I'm not going to go anymore because it's, it's getting late. So anything else anybody wants to add? Because if not, we're in a journey. We don't have any closed session after this. So everybody knows, we're done. All right.